All right, well, we are one minute past, so I think we probably ought to get the meeting started. We do not have Debbie tonight, she's on vacation. I believe Jennifer Hannan is going to be taking minutes, and we're going to have the assistants, Dan and Steve regarding voting roll calls. A little bit of housekeeping for public comments, you know, with Zoom being kind of an interesting platform to make this happen, especially when we use the webinar form. We're asking that you contact us in advance of the public meeting part of the agenda, so that we are able to get to people in somewhat of an orderly manner, because we have to sort of promote you and allow you to then to speak. And the same three-minute rules will apply, et cetera. But, you know, it does take a little bit of organization to make that happen. You can still email Debbie, even though she's out, we are monitoring that email, as well as Drew's, and both should be on your screen, should be able to see it there. So if you would like to speak, please do let them know. I believe Drew also mentioned that Q and A is enabled in the webinar, and I believe he said that you could utilize that to make a request as well. Drew, would you like to clarify anything if I've misstated it?
You got it. Correct.
Perfect. Um, okay. Well, with that, I guess we'll do our roll call. So Jennifer, if you would, Hannan, sorry, Jennifer Hannan, if you would please catch who's here.
Janet. I can see you, Janet.
Here, I'm here, thank you.
Jennifer, I can see you, and Jonathan, I can see you, and Lori.
Here.
You, Shelley, I can see you, Tom, are you there? Yes.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you see me?
I can see you, thank you. Irv.
Looks like his hand is raised.
Yep, I saw the same thing. Somebody may have to promote him, yeah.
Oh.
Okay. Uh, while we're getting him on, first item tonight is going to be our pledge salute, so we'll proceed with that. I believe Maddie was going to pop up the, yep, there it comes. Right. The Pledge Allegiance of the United States of the nation under God. Thank you, Maddie. Right, first up tonight is going to be our annual nomination and election of Board Chair and Vice Chair. And the plan I'd like to follow tonight is similar to how we did the Budget Chair and Vice Chair, which is to accept nominations, make sure that individuals are willing to serve that are nominated, engage in any necessary discussion, and then proceed to a vote. So with that, I will open the floor up to nominations. We're going to start with Chair and complete that process, and then we will move on to Vice Chair once that's completed.
Yes, I would like to nominate Janet Alenak as Chair.
Janet, are you willing to be Chair?
I am, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jonathan, I nominate Jonathan as Board Chair.
Thank you, Tom. I am willing to give it a go again this year, yes, in fact, I wouldn't mind, so thank you.
Did we find Irv?
I know I saw him raise his hand. Did he get on, Drew?
I don't see him yet, but we'll keep looking for him and add him in when he comes.
Okay, yeah, he texted me and said he was on, so I'm not sure.
I see him, here he comes.
Okay.
So I see him.
Yep, there he's coming up. We should make sure he has a chance to nominate somebody if he'd like to.
You're live, Ern, Irv.
Oh, my lantern of the mall.
Oh, you made it.
That means, oh my goodness, anyway, this has been quite the challenge tonight. Yes, I would like to second Tom's choice for you, Jonathan.
Oh, okay, thank you, Irv. Any, okay. Any other nominations on the floor tonight?
I'd like to nominate Janet Alenak for the Board Chair for the 2021 school year.
Okay, she was nominated and accepted, is that, are you seconding that?
I'm seconding that, yes, thank you.
Right. Any, any discussion that people would like to, to share, or any thoughts they'd like to share before we proceed?
Well, if no one else is going to talk, I'll be the first one. First of all, I want to thank both of you for stepping up for and accepting the nominations for this year. And it's, it's, from what I've seen from this chair, it can be a little bit difficult, but I'm very grateful that both of you have accepted the nomination first. Um, the second thing I'd like to say is, I think that, from my perspective, this year, after what, since, you know, after having a very difficult last year, and having a brand-new permanent superintendent in place, I think it would be healthy and fruitful to have someone else take the reins this year to, you know, connect with the new superintendent and the assistant superintendent. And I think it's healthy for other people to have their turn to do this. Janet is highly qualified, she has been on other boards outside of the school board. I think she would have the capability of unifying our board into, you know, seven people who can vote mostly 7-0 on topics. She has great communication skills, she has significant thought process and critical thinking skills that I think are going to be needed significantly for this coming year. We are in highly unusual times, and I think she would just do a terrific job facilitating, not just working with our superintendent, but facilitating and communicating often with our board as a whole. I, I just think she would do a fantastic job. So I really support her in her, in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thanks.
I do appreciate Janet's understanding of parliamentary procedure. She also is very articulate, and I believe has given a lot of balance to this board in the past year. And I think she would be a great act, well, a great contribution as Chair, so.
Thanks, Lori.
Sure.
Yeah, Jonathan, I, I guess I'd like, after what Jonathan's gone through this past year, I guess I'd like to see him have one more shot, hopefully have one more. It's been a very tumultuous year. I certainly think Janet is qualified, I'd just like to see Jonathan have one more shot at hopefully a more stable year. And hopefully see all the, the difficulty that the board's gone through this past year, you know. See him in that chair, I'd like to see him in that, in that, in that chair for a stable year versus, versus, versus what we all experienced last year.
Appreciate it. Yes. You're muted, Jen.
I agree with what everybody has said of everyone on the board. I think Jonathan and Janet both have the skill sets to do the job, so I too am happy that they're both willing to do it. One thing I've been thinking about is the fact that every two years the board changes because of elections, and that this could be a time where we don't have a change. Because, well, if we had Jonathan for another year, it would just be continuity. But in general, I think that we should switch it up. But I think two years is a good timeframe. So I guess I would probably be leaning towards Jonathan, but I'm still open to hearing people's arguments.
Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you for your thoughts, and I agree with, you know, some of the comments that you made. I would just like to see this year moving forward. I guess in my thought, I would like to see, you know, you know, more communication to board members. I feel like this past year, there were multiple things that I just, that happened that I just don't feel comfortable. You know, with Jonathan at the helm. I, I think he did some really great things for our board. But I think, for me at least, I would like to see this brand-new superintendent start off on a really good foot with Janet. She's just, she's had so much experience, and she's so, like Lori said, articulate. She's conversational, she looks in-depth at details. And I feel like with our upcoming year, oh, um, with what's happening with our school year, I, I just, I, I feel so confident that Janet will do such a good job, especially with communication. That's the key to everything and how this is going to, we're going to have a really successful year. I just, yeah, this has been a very difficult decision. And I understand the continuity, but I think we're in extenuating circumstances, and I think she could do the job above and beyond. So thank you for asking for more information, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, Irv.
Yeah, um, well, I, I agree basically with everybody. And I believe Janet could do a good job, but I still feel, for the district's sake, that Jonathan is our best candidate for the chairperson.
Thanks, Lori.
I believe in opportunity, and I really have no problem with us offering opportunity to other board members as Chair. And so if we're looking for stability, if 2020 hasn't taught us one thing, and that is to always be prepared for the unexpected. So I'm not sure if having the same person as Chair is going to provide us with more stability. I am a much deeper believer in times like these that opportunity is critical, and I stand by Janet Alenak.
Thanks. Yeah, I want to add that I actually agree too with, I think, everything a lot of people are saying here. I maybe selfishly am hoping to serve one more year to get, hopefully, a little bit more stable year, actually. It was pretty hectic in the last year. And wouldn't mind doing that, but I do also agree that I think Janet would make a great Chair. So I'm not, in a way, I think, trying to suggest otherwise. So that's, I guess, where I'm.
I feel like I should. Oh, sorry, Lori.
I, I'll make this quick. I have to say that throughout the year, we've often deferred to Ms. Alenak when it came to procedure and how the board would maneuver through various situations. And I, I think that's a fairly good indicator as well, the confidence and certainly her knowledge and skill set. I yield.
Thank you. I just want to thank Shelley and Lori for their extraordinary support. Those are very, very generous words, and I really appreciate it. I do, I do have a vision for where this board could really function better than it has potentially in the past. One that is more collaborative and more open and more accessible to the public. So I just did want to share that with you, that I, I would not take this on lightly. I do have a strong sense of purpose for really improving the way we govern and improving the way we communicate with our public, who we're accountable to, and, and improving our relationship with our staff. I think we have a lot of work to do in those areas. And so I just did want to share that I do have a vision for, and a passion. I have a passion for processes, and I have a passion for principles and doing things the right way. And I would look forward to the opportunity to be able to really bring those skills and those values to the role. So thank you.
Okay. With that, I believe what we ought to do is move on to doing a, basically what I want to do is a ballot. I'd rather than go through name by name, I think we'll just go through, there's two candidates, and we'll go through each board member, and I'm guessing with two, one will end up with at least four. So, all right, let's see, Dan, are you, yeah, there you are.
Yeah, so do you want me just to call each board member's name, and they will indicate between you and Janet?
I think that's the easiest, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that Steve is ready to tally, so I'm going to start with Janet.
I would vote for myself for Janet, thank you.
Can I just raise a point of order before we start? Are we sure that we, we don't have to do a motion to say, like, I move to elect Jonathan Edmonds as Chair, and then have a second and a vote?
It's a good question, I'm not sure that we need that with a move and a second for both already. Having said that, the, the way that we have done this in the past has varied, and I was selecting one of the two options that we went with in the past. I have no qualms if we want to move it formally down sort of each individual by name and then tally the votes.
Okay, well, I guess that would be my preference.
So let's, let's do that, let's go ahead. I don't want to do anything that would be uncoordinated or uncomfortable. So with that said, let's, we'll open up the floor for motions to elect the Chair.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Janet Alenak as Board Chair of the Silver Falls School District for the year of July 2022, June of 2021.
So moved.
I'll second.
And seconded. Okay. At this point, Dan, if you would, you do the roll call, it'd be appreciated.
So just for clarification, so now when I call names, it'll be a yay or a nay, is that what we're expecting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. So, so that there's no secrets, I'm doing this alpha by last name, so we will start again at Janet.
Yes.
Tom?
Nay.
Jonathan?
Nay.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Irv?
No.
Jennifer?
Nay.
Uh, Steve, if you've got what I have, it is four to three for nay.
Correct.
Okay, with the motion failing, floor is still open.
I move to elect Jonathan Edmonds as Chair for the 2020-2021 school year, or year.
So moved.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. I guess we'll rehearse the process, please, Dan.
Okay. Janet?
Nay.
Tom?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Lori?
Nay.
Shelley?
Nay.
Irv?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Aye.
I believe, Steve, we, four to three for ayes.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, I do appreciate it, and I will strive to improve in any way I can. By all means, continue to provide feedback, it's meaningful to me. So we will run through another year, see how it goes. With that, we will move on to nominate and elect a Vice Chairperson, same format, please, for consistency and simplicity. We'll open it for nominations, follow by discussion.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Traeger for Vice Chair, please.
Thank you, Jennifer, are you willing?
I'm willing.
I'd like to nominate Janet Alenak for Vice Chair.
Thank you, Janet. I assume the answer is yes, but I'll get your.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Okay. We can move on to discussion. Well, I'll start, Jennifer's been really valuable to me this last year. She has been somebody that I have been able to pick her brain on multiple times, get different points of view from all kinds of different folks in the community, somebody whom I've appreciated working with, and I guess, under the guise of trying to just have a stable year without a lot of change, I would support her.
Yeah, I would just like to second that, Jonathan, that Jennifer is someone that brings a sense of calmness and openness to the board that we need and to the community. I really appreciate what Jennifer does for the board.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I just want to second what, what Irv said, he said it, he said it perfectly, thank you.
I just want to echo my comments about Janet Alenak when I was commenting about her for the Board Chair. I think that she would be an excellent asset this year. And I think that it would be very important to have a bit of a change this year. I, I think it's healthy for this year. And, you know, I think we need to think beyond, you know, you know, it's more so not just about consistency, there's so much more to it. And I think with a brand-new superintendent, we need to have new, a new voice somewhere in this mix. I think it's important and it's healthy. So I would urge you to vote for Janet, and, you know, Jonathan and Janet can work together with Mr. Drew this year.
Again, it, it's about opportunity and those who have solid skill sets. And I think sometimes we, we tend to lean towards what is comfortable as opposed to what is the best decision for the situation that we are currently at. And I do believe that Janet deserves an opportunity and a chance to show what she can offer to this board. She has a vision, she has the experience. And I would like the board to consider not being comfortable, but actually considering someone who could really boost and broaden our board, because we dearly need it right now.
Thanks, Lori. If there's no further discussion, I will open the floor to motions for approving a Vice Chair.
So I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jennifer for Vice Chair for school year 2021.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded.
Who seconded that?
Tom.
We're ready, Jonathan?
Yep, I think we're ready.
And just as a clarification, since Jennifer Hannan is taking notes, it just makes sense that she will be recording now the votes.
Okay.
So, so can you repeat the, the motion, just to, we're clear, Jonathan, since I kind of interrupted there, or interjected?
The motion is to elect Jennifer Traeger as Vice Chair for the upcoming school year.
All right, thank you. All right, Janet?
Nay.
Tom?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Lori?
Nay.
Shelley?
Nay.
Irv?
Yes.
Jennifer?
You're muted, Jennifer.
Aye.
All right.
I have that motion in four to three.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Janet, for your willingness to do this, and I do think you'll have that opportunity within your term, I'm pretty sure.
I would just like to say one thing before we move on.
Sure.
Jonathan, can you hear me?
I can, I said sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that, thank you. Um, I, I was hoping that we could get someone new in our Chair and Vice Chair position. And I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed, but I'm also a little bit nervous about it. And we are starting our 2021 year off as a split board, a four-three board. And I think there's going to have to be some extraordinary actions by our by our chair and our and our vice chair to bring our board together and unify. I don't see this as a positive, starting off our year with a permanent superintendent as a split board. So I'm really hoping and, you know, crossing my fingers that this is going to be a more communicative board from our chair and our and our vice chair. And that we're all working from the same information, that way we can make really informed decisions. So I wish you luck. Thank you for stepping up.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of approving the minutes from the June 22 meeting, as well as our annual designations, which consists of, I guess, about 17 different designations that we officially make every year at this time. I would open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Jonathan, I move that we accept, approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
And seconded, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull one item from the consent agenda. It's 4B, number 12. Legal counsel Hungerford Law Firm, Garrett Heeman Robertson Law Firm, and Lisa Freely, WESD, to have further discussion. And I'd like to turn it over right now to our superintendent, Scott Drew and Dan Bush.
Yeah, we can, we can pull that item out. What I'd like to do is proceed with the remainder of the consent agenda and then proceed with 4B following, thank you. So board member Nealan has requested that we pull 4B, which I think we have to do in its entirety, actually, I'm not sure we would pull just one piece of it out for discussion prior to adopting all of those designations. And as it only takes one board member to request that, we'll be pulling that off. So the consent agenda now consists solely of approving the minutes from the previous board meeting. And I'll open the floor to a motion to approve the modified consent agenda.
Jonathan, I I move that we approve the modified consent agenda.
Thank you, Tom, so moved. Seconded by Jennifer. Any discussion on the meeting minutes, which I believe is all that's left? Moved and seconded, at this point, let's go ahead and proceed with our roll call.
Janet?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Irv?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So moving on to 4B, there was a question about 12, no, 12 legal counsel. And Scott, if you would like to, that or Dan?
Uh, I think I will, there were some questions related to the legal firms and 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 various people that are listed there as who we do business with legally in legal matters. And so I thought I would give the board a little bit of an update on how we use those three folks and also a potential new direction, won't be for tonight's consent agenda, but an update there as well as another law firm that we eventually might be doing partnering with. And so the Hungerford Law Firm is who we, their primary role is labor relations. They represented us during negotiations with the teachers, and they're currently representing us with classified negotiations. It is probably also who will be, for consistency's sake, it'll probably be who we utilize for developing a classified MOU related to reopening schools in the fall with, due to the pandemic and the closure, there there will likely be an MOU necessary with both associations. We will use Hungerford for the classified association group, at least that's our intent at this point. And they also help us with, the Hungerfords help us with employee discipline issues. And then we also, they have a member of their firm who specializes in IDEA or special education. And so whenever there's questions related to special education, they are often who we refer to. So that's some information as to related to when or why we might use the Hungerford Law Firm. Garrett Heeman Robertson, they are, we primarily use them related to contracts within the districts, primarily within the business department, that would be, Steve would be the primary person to contact them if there was a contract. And 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 primarily, we're talking about property or facility issues that we may need some some legal expertise on in negotiating a contract that has to do with property or facilities. And so Garrett Heeman Robertson is who we do business with for that. Lisa Freely is one we've worked with for a few years under, with the WSD, related to the resolution dollars that we use. Her primary, she she does a lot of work with us related to a lot of little things. Or nothing's little when you're involving an attorney, but a variety of different things I should point out. And and is oftentimes utilized, you know, kind of at a moment's notice sort of thing. I will say that she worked with us on both of the MOUs related to the WorkShare program that where we were able to reach an agreement with both associations for that. She she will probably be who we use related to an MOU with the Teachers Association as we go into needing to have an MOU for reopening schools. So she is the person we plan to utilize for that. She provides oversight with various types of letters that we might need some legal guidance on. And and because of the unique status that she has with resolution funds to where it's not being billed by the hour, so to speak, we we do allow our other administrators to access her when legal questions arise. With the others, it would go through me or or Scott or Steve to determine whether a legal review is necessary because of how Lisa's paid for. You know, we kind of cut out that step, and we would allow a principal or another administrator to to go straight to Lisa for any kind of legal advice. So that's that's how we utilize her. And I referenced earlier, we are in a beginning process. And by beginning, just a discussion within the administrative team of considering adding Miller Nash, which is a Portland law firm, to do legal business with, and I think that might be a good, just a suggestion point, maybe a good group for the board to consider for itself, potentially. We have, you know, the Hungerfords for labor relations, we have Garrett Heeman Robertson for contracts, we have Lisa Freely for a lot of different or variety of things. But I thought that maybe Miller Nash might be a law firm in Portland worth considering for the board, should the board have some legal questions. So that hopefully answers some questions and gives both you and the public a little bit of an idea of who we use and why.
Thank you, Dan, really appreciate the update, and it's super valuable for all of us to hear it.
Thank you, Dan, for um working with me to explain that to the board and to the public. I think it's it's fruitful and it's healthy for people to understand that. So I appreciate your work on that, and I'll look forward to hearing more about the Portland law firm Miller Nash to help us with, you know, potential future legal questions as a board if we need it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I will try to reach out to them here within the next week or so to start a conversation. And then, and you're welcome, Shelley, I think that this particular line item, because there's three versus maybe a particular agency where it's a singular one, this probably deserves a deeper discussion on, so you're welcome.
Right, so yes, thank you very much.
Well, I want to say thank you, and I am very happy to hear what you have shared, Dan, because I, for a very long time, have had reservations. And I've mentioned it multiple times in emails, and it was never quite discussed or resolved, and it has been a concern of mine for quite some time. So I'm glad that we're working through this, so it can be, I would say, a little bit more balanced all the way around. And so thank you for your work, and I appreciate the update and look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
I move to approve the annual designation list.
So moved.
I second it.
Moved and seconded, we have had some discussion, it's all up for discussion. Is there anything else people needed to talk about or would like to talk about regarding 4B, all of our annual designations? Shelley, are you aiming to?
I'm I'm trying to get off, get on my microphone, thank you. So just to be clear, with this motion to pass the this list of items, we are approving the legal counsel Hungerford Law Firm, Garrett Heeman Robertson Law Firm, and Lisa Freely, WESD, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and then we're going to have more discussion about Miller Nash in the future.
Correct, I don't believe this is binding from the standpoint that it is exclusive to the list we approved tonight, I believe.
Right, okay, yeah, just wanted to make it clear, just, you know, so we go away with clarity. Thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded, Dan, let's proceed, please, to a vote.
Okay. Janet?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Irv?
Aye.
And Jennifer?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. With that passing, we're going to move on to item number five, which is our first public comment. As I mentioned on the outset, hopefully you've had a chance, if you'd like to speak, to email Drew or Debbie or to request it even maybe through the Q and A. Drew, how are we doing with the lineup? Do we have several that are queued up already, sort of ready to go?
Yep, Chuck, Kirsten, Crystal, Sarah, and Ray are in the queue, and we'll enable their microphones here, starting with Chuck.
Okay, so Jonathan, are you going to read the statement?
Yeah, so I, and, you know, this happened last time to me. I don't actually have the one that Debbie normally hands me when we have the person meetings. And but as as always, we are limiting this to a three-minute statement, unless you're representing a group, when it's five minutes. And we will be, I think, Jennifer, you were this time going to actually flash a 30-second card, should you get close to the end as a as a sort of a notification that you're.
And I think it would be useful, I don't know if people can see my screen or not, that's the only concern that I have. But if you can, if you're speaking and you can see me, I do have a 30-second and a "time is up" sign that I will post.
Thank you.
Jonathan, would you like me to read the public comment statement that I have up here on my computer that Debbie gave to us?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Welcome. The Silverfall School Board invites and encourages citizen attendance and involvement. Thank you for coming. All Board of Education monthly business meetings, with the exception of executive session, are open to the public and are conducted in public. Hearings on subjects are conducted at separate meetings. Note, tonight's business meeting is designated to keep presentations and deliberations efficient and effective. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, the board will direct the superintendent to that. The board will not take action at this meeting on non-agenda issues raised during public comment period. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent for review, do nothing, or place it on a later agenda. The board encourages citizens to share their ideas, opinions, raise questions, concerns, or compliments. Under public comment, the board chairperson will ask those in attendance if anyone would like to address the board. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand at the time to be recognized by the board chairperson. You will be asked to speak from the table in front of the board. Remember that we all model the way our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. Anyone providing public testimony is required to place their name and address on the sign and log at the time of speaking. All public testimony is limited to three minutes for each individual. Up to five minutes may be granted to groups of three or more with similar testimony. Please identify your group and designate one spokesperson. Due to time constraints, the maximum amount of public testimony is 10 individuals. When called, please state your name, relationship to the district, place of residence, and the subject which you will address. The board will not hear personal complaints concerning district personnel or against any person connected with the school system. Public input from an individual should be new information only. Those repeating previous testimony will not be allowed to continue. If you have questions about the district, we would encourage you to contact our superintendent. Thank you for your support of Silverfall School District.
Thanks, Shelley, I believe that was the full policy.
Chuck, you can be over to turn on your microphone.
So am I, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, this is Chuck Shagatoff, I live at 325 Telecom Drive. I've been asked by a number of people why I filed my public records lawsuit and why I filed a complaint with the Ethics Commission for for the board violating the public meetings law. Well, I have a number of reasons for both actions, they have at least two things in common. I wanted to to help the district understand how to follow public records and public meetings laws, so the district will benefit from good transparency in government. And I wanted the board and the community to understand that, under the leadership of then-superintendent Andy Belando, the district developed, unfortunately, practices of withholding documents from public scrutiny, and the board engaged in wrongful executive sessions that put the district and all board members at jeopardy of lawsuits and fines. Under his leadership, the board developed the practice of allowing off-topic discussions to occur in executive sessions. Those executive sessions were steered off course to allow administrators to verbally and in writing confront and threaten a board member and conceal those actions from the public. As set forth in the settlement judgment, those written documents should never have been withheld from the public. And as set forth in my ethics complaint, those discussions should never have taken place in executive session, if it even at all. Today, this unfortunate practice of keeping information for the public continues. Your agenda item 11B has you voting to approve a lawsuit settlement that the district already agreed to almost two months ago. Your attorney signed the consent judgment on May 28. There was no public meeting where the district voted on the settlement. By law, the board may not make final decisions during an executive session, yet this is exactly what appears to have happened in your May 18 meeting. Why was Mr. Mercereau, the district's attorney, at your May 18th executive session? He was there to obtain his client's approval or disapproval of my lawyer's formal settlement proposal as required by lawyer lawyer ethics rules. The following day, your attorney wrote to my attorney, informed him that the district, not the insurer Pace, had agreed to the principal terms of the settlement. If he didn't obtain the district's approval that day, or by the 18th, 19th, excuse me, you should take that up with the Oregon State Bar and his malpractice insurer. Your obligation to cooperate with Pace does not, your insurer, does not mean that the lawyer did not have to get your approval to settle. Today, instead of your inartful after-the-fact motion, you should tell the community what steps your staff is taking to be sure the district doesn't again violate Oregon's public records and meetings law. Another way you can show the community, you want to re, to conduct business in a more open and accountable manner is to reconsider your decision to renew Ms. Freely's contract. On multiple occasions, Ms. Freely's advice has cost the district and some of you personally time, money, and reputation. Whether it is the grievances from two years ago, my public records litigation, misleading the board about status of litigation, and then going into a. misleading the Board about status of litigation, and then going into an executive session as a result, there's no reason to have confidence Ms. Freely's ability to represent you well. It makes no sense for this, this Board to continue to seek her advice when history shows her advice has been costly to your reputations and the district. Like Dan Bush, Dandy Stevens thought Ms. Freely was doing a good job, too. History shows otherwise. It's time for you to do what our school district, hopefully, one sentence. It's time for you to do what our school district, hopefully, teaches kids to do. Admit when you are wrong and learn from your mistakes. I am not alone and anxiously awaiting for you to do so.
And Drew, I think you're going to queue up whoever's next, please.
Thanks, Drew. Hi, this is Kirsten Lenthway. I live on Edison Road, and I am a parent in the Silverfall School District with one child in Mark Twain, another one entering Robert Frost this year. I want to address the reopening policies that have been put out. There's been a couple comments already tonight about how we came out of last year and the concerns both with the administration and the Board, and a lack, a lack of trust that was built up in the community with the Board and the administration. And I am concerned with the lack of transparency in that process. I appreciate the hard work that everyone's going through. I fully agree that there's no easy answers. But the fact that decisions were made without parental involvement, when other districts surrounding us, as close as Mount Angel, put out surveys to involve the community in their decision-making process, is really a bad way to start this year, which is already going to be pretty rocky. I'd also like to express my concern about the lack of online school planning. I did see the email today that there's going to be an opening up of that option, but it will have limited capacity. We already have test cases for this in the pandemic. Both Israel and Germany have reopened their schools with social distancing and masks, and both of them have had to also shut schools back down when there's been local cases and teachers involved, and move all the kids right away back to fully online learning. If we are not prepared to have these kids go back to online learning and help the teachers get prepared for that, we are further setting these kids behind. The frustration that parents and teachers and students felt in the spring was that this was all, had to be very rushed. It was unusual circumstances. We all agree with that. But there's a lot that other districts are doing to prepare already to make sure that if and when they have to shut a school, that school down, or send a class home to quarantine, that everyone's prepared to go back to an online option. I'm concerned that Silverfalls is not taking that seriously enough, and that we're not investing in that right now, because it is going to take time to identify the students, to help teachers adjust their curriculum, to find appropriate vendors, to help kids get devices, to make sure kids have access to internet. All of that will take time. And if we're not preparing now in July, we are going to be further behind come September. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Crystal, you're up.
Hi, my name is Crystal Bieleberg. I have four children in the Silverfall School District. I have an incoming freshman, and then the rest of my children at Scottsdale School. I really agree with pretty much everything Kirsten just said. I think that you guys really need to have a backup plan and expand the distance learning options. I'm concerned with the cleaning supplies, masks, things of those nature. I know in the past, teachers have had to ask parents to provide things like Clorox wipes and whatnot. So I'm really concerned if the district's going to be providing those, if they're going to have masks available for students who don't have them, forgot them, can't afford them, things like that. I'm also a nurse. I work for one of the counties in Oregon, and my job is COVID case management. And I am really wondering if you guys are prepared for the, the tracing that will need to happen as you start to have positive students, the notifications that'll need to be done, the phone calls from parents. I just really am worried that you guys are not fully prepared for these kids to go back to school. I'm worried that you're continuing to ask teachers to do more with less. And personally, at this point, I would not send my kids back to school. So if there are not distance learning options, then I'll be looking into my own personal
Thank you, Crystal, for the feedback.
Sarah?
Yes, hi. Can you all hear me? Great. Good evening, Chair Edmonds, members of the Board, Superintendent Drew. My name is Sarah Rife. I'm a Silverfall School District parent. I have two children in the schools, and I live on James Street in Silverton. I am speaking tonight also regarding the district's plans for reopening the schools this fall. And you do have an expanded version of my comments that I submitted for inclusion in the public record. I want to first acknowledge the work that the district and staff have been putting into planning thus far. You're working within extremely narrow sideboards with the ODE guidelines and the state budget being what it is, and that's not an easy task. And certainly, there's no magic bullet that meets everyone's needs. But I've read the district's plans for reopening and the proposal to serve students through the hybrid cohort model. I actually, I do support this concept, but I think the plans need to go further. And to better support the district families, students, and teachers, I recommend that you expand your plans. And I've got three recommendations that I'll go into. One is, is to include a 100% online option for all district families if they so choose. I, too, saw Superintendent Drew's email this afternoon, and I'm glad to see that there is planning going on for contracting to develop an online option. But it does sound like this will only be provided to those that can demonstrate the need, and I would encourage you to not limit the online option. I'm extremely concerned about the impact of a large wave of un-enrollment on the district's future budget. If this is a funding issue, can you please let us, district families, know how we can help? I recommend that the district partner with its families for fundraising, as I think many of us would be more than willing to help launch a fundraising campaign. It's also my intent to advocate for emergency federal funding making its way through the state budget allocations, but please let your district families partner with you to overcome this obstacle, because I think it is one that we can overcome if we work together. And I think we need to plan for the inevitable. As Kirsten said, if we don't plan for this online option now, we're going to be in the same undesirable place we found ourselves this last spring when we asked teachers to cobble together a distance learning curriculum with inadequate time and resources. My second recommendation is that you include a delayed or a soft start that would give teachers more time to develop the distance learning content that would support the hybrid option. Okay, I'm just, thank you, Jennifer. I've just got 30 seconds left. And you can, I've got that in my comment letter, but I just want to make sure that teachers have the time that they need, and I'd be willing to see a later start date for our school year if it could give the teachers more time to develop their pass-through communication. And lastly, consider a mask requirement for all students to protect the teachers, to better protect the students. I'm hearing many parents say that if only the district would require facial coverings for children, they would keep them, their children enrolled. So thank you for listening, your constituents, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Sarah. Really appreciate it. Drew, are there further public comments?
Hello now? Hello? Hello?
Hi, Irv. Or sorry.
I'm talking. I see people. Are you hearing me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I'll, I'll proceed. I, I'll assume that you're hearing. Thank you. Raymond Kizer, patron of the district. I live on Sun Valley in Silverton. Earlier today, I sent an email to the Board regarding Agenda Item 11B, meeting date July 13th, 2020. I did that because I wanted Board members to know in advance my thoughts. No surprises. Later in the morning, I did have a telephone conversation with Jonathan, and I need to assure you that Jonathan is in, in no way, shape, or form attempted to put words into my mouth. The conversation did, however, make me reflect on the tone of my letter, which is just as important as the content. It also made me think again about my goals, wishes for the district, both immediate and long-term. One of my goals for the Board and administration is to maintain a system of openness and transparency. I believe Mr. Drew talked very strongly about that in his superintendent interview. That impressed me. But that includes an atmosphere in which any Board member or patron can ask a question without fear of criticism or reprisal. I believe that such an atmosphere has not been present in the past, and among other things, this sparsity has indeed resulted in serious loss of staff morale. That is not a good situation for an educational institution. My goal is to hope for a correction of this situation. Another goal is that the administration, as directed by the Board, provide more information to the public through Board Book, for example. There's no better way to squelch rumors than to have the facts. This has not been adequately done in the past, in my opinion. Mr. Shagatoff discussed the Marion County Court case, and so I have it in my letter. I'm not going to read that. He covered that. However, I believe the part of that where the district has had a pattern of claiming that material could not be released to the public just because it was discussed in executive session, that can no longer be allowed. I think that's very important. So continuing on, I'm, I'm not going to read the text of my earlier email that was sent to the Board this morning. It should be made available to anyone who asks. Anyone reading it, however, should also consider information provided at the meeting tonight. Looking ahead, the sins of the past are just, excuse me, the sins of the past are just fat, past. It's time for the Board and administration to provide information, good and bad, squelch rumors, admit past mistakes, publish correspondence, and most importantly, concentrate our efforts on education done in a safe realm for students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it.
Jonathan, we have one more. It's named as Samsung SM, but we can allow him to talk, and then I'll ask him to introduce themselves. If that's okay.
Hey, Drew, before we start that, can you flash that information up on the screen one more time, just in case anybody has missed the procedure protocol for public comment?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Maddie do that. All right, Samsung, you've got the floor. Please introduce yourself. Could be that they inadvertently put their hand up, Jonathan, so maybe give him a second, and I'm not going to mess with the microphone.
Samsung SM, if you're there and we're hoping to speak, this is your chance.
I have one more, Eliza Torlin, and I'll find her in the list and enable her. All right, Eliza, you're in.
Hello, is this?
I can hear you.
Hi, all. I just wanted to let you guys know that I really appreciate the hard work being done for the hybrid learning system this year. But I also want to say that I am terribly nervous about taking my kids to school next year, and that's all they want. But I would really appreciate having an online system, and perhaps even thinking from the perspective of starting with an online distance program that turned into a school program, because I, we do see COVID numbers ticking, and I just wanted to let you guys know that as much as I want to send my kids to school, I'm pretty nervous about it. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Eliza. Understood. Appreciate you speaking up.
That's all I have, Jonathan.
Okay, well, thanks. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. All right, next up on our agenda, we have SFEA with Michelle Stepley.
Hey, Drew, I have a question for you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Michelle, your life.
Thank you. Is there any way that we can actually see the people who are speaking? When I try to find, you know, a visual to, you know, listen to them, is there any way we can do that? I haven't been able to see anybody.
Michelle will be our test case.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Michelle, you'll have to unmute yourself, and off you go.
Okay. Um, hi, guys. Thanks for, thanks for having me. Um, I just want to apologize ahead of time. My internet has been struggling today. I was having a, having a meeting with our SFEA Executive Board earlier, and I got kicked out several times. So hopefully that won't happen, but if it does, that's what's going on. Um, so obviously, we have a lot going on, even though it's July, and, you know, usually, teachers are pretty quiet and trying to recharge for the coming school year in the month of July, but that really hasn't been the case so far. So, um, I just wanted to talk about a few things. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to both Scott and Dan. They have been, so far, really communicative with me in regards to just the process, process and progress that's being made at the district level on different decisions for, for starting school in the We are working right now, actually, on setting up a weekly standing labor management meeting so that we can keep those lines of communication open. And so I really appreciate their willingness to do that, and just the effort that they've already put in. So thank you, you guys. And then, so SFEA put out a survey last week to our membership in regard to the, the district's reopening plan, the initial plan that was sent out, just to get kind of a feel for where our membership is at when it comes to even starting back to school in person, to the specifics of the plan, and just in their own general, you know, their own general feelings about going back to work in person. And so I just wanted to share some of those results with you guys, just to kind of give you a better idea of where your licensed staff are at in this process, and, and just their thoughts at this point. So first of all, we, SFEA has, if I'm remembering correctly, 217 members, and we had 149 respond to our survey. So that's actually, that's a pretty good result. And so one of the first questions that I asked on the survey was just in their general level of comfort with going back to school in the fall, and with the particular plan of Mondays being kind of a planning day, a taking care of business type day with no students, and then having our kids split into two cohorts with a, Cohort A coming on Tuesday, Thursday, and Cohort B coming on Wednesday, Friday. And so the options that they were given were very comfortable, somewhat comfortable, somewhat somewhat uncomfortable, and very uncomfortable. I don't like to give a middle option because too many people take that one and that doesn't really tell me a whole lot. Um, and so when I, when I asked that question, we actually got a pretty even split. So our staff is, is feeling pretty conflicted about that. We've got about half the staff who are, who are feeling comfortable with returning and comfortable with the plan, and half the staff who are not feeling comfortable with returning. And so the majority of those votes were in the two more middle categories, the somewhat comfortable and the somewhat uncomfortable. And then, you know, a few, a fewer number on each of more extreme ends of the question. Um, so let's see, I also asked about whether childcare would be an issue for our members with the particular plan with students in our district only attending two days a week. So assuming that, that a teacher is also a parent in our district, asking whether or not that would be an added burden for them for childcare. And about 30% of our members said that that would be an issue for them under this current plan. Um, let's see, sorry, I'm looking at my computer. Uh, oh, I asked, I asked if, if our members felt that they were able to give input in regard to their particular school's reopening plan. Um, so, so since the district came out with the model, like the, the main structure, if, if our membership feels comfortable or has been given opportunity to give input in regard to the specifics of their school building. And 80% of our membership felt that they were able to give input. So whether that was being a part of the reopening committee or simply emailing their administrator, or just knowing that the option was available, 80% of our membership had that option. So that's pretty good. Um, I did ask if, if members would be more open to participating in their school's reopening plans if that time was paid, because as of right now, the, the, the members who are working on their school's reopening committees are not being paid for that time. They're just volunteering that time. And 67% of our membership said yes, they would be more willing to do that work if it was paid work. Um, and then I, I gave several opportunities for open-ended responses. So requesting, you know, questions that I should ask of the district, what folks are concerned about, and then just, you know, anything else. So I'm still working through all of that information. As you can imagine with 149 responses, there are a lot of various things included in that. But some of the common themes that I've seen so far are just a basic questioning of, of the reality of going back in the fall and the reality of, you know, is, is it really going to be safe? You know, we know that, that our district is working hard to do everything that we can to make it as safe as possible, but even those measures, are they truly safe? And that's a big question that our teachers have. A lot of the questions have to do with specific that Dan will probably have to work through us or work through with us in regard to HR. Things like if I get COVID and I'm out, how, you know, do I have to burn all my sick leave for that? Um, or, you know, are there other, other options? Um, what happens if, you know, a student is diagnosed with COVID? What does that look like for their cohort? What does that look like for any of the teachers or staff who are, who are in contact with them? So just kind of the practical questions that are going to have to be, be answered before teachers really feel comfortable going back. Um, and then, you know, subs. So if we have teachers who are sick, um, you know, generally we have a substitute come in and cover for them. How, how is that going to work? Are we going to have subs who are assigned to one specific school? Or are they going to be, you know, subbing for me at the middle school and then the next day going to the high school? And, you know, that, that's just another thing that came up pretty regularly, actually. Facilities and how safe really is it to be sending kids and teachers back into buildings where airflow is pretty stagnant in a lot of places? And that, you know, that's been proven to not be a healthy situation to send people into. And so, yeah, we had a lot of questions about the actual facilities and how they're going to play into this plan. And just a lot of requests for precautionary measures. You know, as of right now, the, the plan is for teachers and staff to wear face coverings, to wear masks and things, but not required for students under 12 and required for students over 12, but also not really enforceable. And so we have a lot of concerns regarding that, especially considering the adults in the building are typically more susceptible to at least getting, you know, worse. Um, so just, you know, just a lot of questions. I've got a couple pages for you, Scott. When, when I'm done going through all of them, I'll, I'll send them your way. Um, I can't tell if I'm still, my screen's frozen, so I might just be.
Your. Audio's fine.
Am I still on, Drew?
Audio is fine.
Audio is fine? Okay, great. Um, okay, let's see. Maybe if Dan or somebody could just text me if you can no longer hear me so that I am not just talking to myself. Oh, let's see. Okay, um, okay, so to sum all of this up, our teachers really are anxious to be back with kids. Like that, that is not in question at all. It's just a matter of making sure that we are, we're doing it safely for students and for the adults in the buildings. Um, the costs of making that decision. We know that there are a lot of negative aspects to having the kids out of school. School offers so many supports to our kids and their families, and schools are truly the cornerstone of the community. But while we want, we all want things to go back to normal, we're not there yet. And even going back in this smaller capacity feels incredibly risky when I think about the health and safety of the educators that I'm here to advocate for. We know that COVID-19 seems to be less virus. Remember that as those in a position of power, you're responsible for the health and wellbeing of your staff and students. Please note that tonight we're meeting virtually instead of in person due to health concerns. But the district may be asking teachers to do the opposite in just six short weeks. We understand that there's no easy answer, but we're requesting that safety be prioritized above anything else. So thank you guys again. And that said, I really am an advocate for keeping the school board meetings virtual. So many more people are participating and tuning in to the virtual meetings. And most of us get to hang out in our living rooms and watch them that way. And it's a lot more comfortable than those chairs at the community center. So I'm just going to say, I think we should keep them virtual. So thank you, you guys. I appreciate your time and let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Michelle. We really appreciate the input and I'm glad you're surveying the group there. Okay, Michelle, yes. Sorry, you're muted, so.
I'm sorry, I was just saying thank you to Michelle. So that's all.
Hand go up, Todd, maybe you were trying to, to speak.
Thank you for that.
Okay, well, thanks, Michelle. All right, with that, we are on to item number seven, discussion items. 7A is to identify the Budget Committee vacancies policy DBEA, which we have linked to on the agenda. And I believe there are two Budget Committee members who are, have a term expiring this year. And so we're opening that up. And if you're interested, by all means, send, send your applications our way. I'm not sure if any of the other board members have any specific discussion that you'd like to have around it today. We certainly, it's a discussion item, we can certainly talk about it.
Yeah, I would like to say a few things. I, I think as we look at these board-appointed committees, that we should definitely consider looking at diversity, not only in gender. We need to also look at our skill sets that we bring to these committees and what we can offer. And I hope that we can allow ourselves as a board to broaden our definition of how we like to see these committees develop and really reflect our community that we serve.
Thanks, Lori.
I just wanted to say something really quick. I know that in, in the past three years, or actually maybe two, we've had some, you know, some discussion about what our actual policy says. There's been some debate, you know, back and forth, but I think it might be helpful, um, you know, this year to potentially look at that policy while we're receiving applicants or applications, while Debbie's receiving applications. Maybe we should look at that and make sure that it's updated and that we have, you know, current language, the way, you know, of course legally, but also, you know, that will work for our district as well. So, um, no time better than the president to start looking at policies. So I think this one would be one that maybe we could, we could jump on real, you know, pretty quick and, and look at it. So I'd like to look at that. I mean, if, if the board agrees, I'd like to look at it sooner than later and maybe get guidance for that policy and update it. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Julie. And I know, Lori, you're, you're collecting a list of policies, but Shelley's right. If we were going to look at this one sooner than later makes sense, given the timeliness of, of our process.
I agree. Absolutely. So let's do that.
I just have input on process because when we try to edit things in the body of seven, it doesn't work all that well. And so I guess is in terms of process, I'm putting forth the idea of delegating that to somebody to take on and then bring back for a couple of readings.
I think it makes a lot of sense. And I, I agree, we did try to do that during a couple of times and it was, it was definitely a challenge to, to kind of work through live edits. Makes a lot of sense, Jennifer. Thank you.
So.
Go ahead, Jen.
Sorry, I just wanted to remind us, well, this doesn't have to do with the appointment of new members. We did commit to that budget committee that we would restructure the process of meeting times and so forth. I just want to make sure that, that we don't let that slip because that was a commitment we made several times. And I think we just, we, we acknowledged that it should probably be a superintendent-appointed sort of subcommittee and it wouldn't be another board committee, but that there would be a group that would continue to meet throughout the course of the year more frequently than the budget committee has met in the past.
Fair enough, yeah. That's a great point and a great reminder.
Excellent.
That's exactly what I was going to bring up. It's, it's on my sheet. So, so thank you, Jen. But my other question for Jennifer is, are you, did I understand you correctly? That you might want to have like a different group of people go over that policy and then bring it to us and look at the, the edits? Or I guess I, can you clarify what you said as far as not being able to have seven people do that?
Something like that. I think other districts have policy committee or not, I don't want to call it committee, but policy groups where it's a smaller number of people who are bringing it forward. Just because I, for the sake of efficiency, because we have a lot of work to do, I don't want to get bogged down in those details when another smaller group, it could even be one person, takes the lead and then brings things back.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think there were, there, I think in the past, there has been, I don't know, quote unquote, what you would call committees or not, that would take, that would be on, that would take on the policies. And they would look at them and meet with the Director of OSBA and, you know, at least implement the updated legal statutes in there, but also form language that reflected the current time of the district. So, yeah, I would, I would be, I would be agreeable to that idea to have, you know, a group somehow come together, you know, that our superintendent can put together or whatnot and, and do that. So I think that would be efficient. Thank you.
Agreed. So why don't we do this? So I think we've officially added this to the list, Lori. And we can, you know, I'll try to send out an email, but we'll try to see who's interested in maybe doing that. We can probably process that offline unless somebody wants to volunteer right now, but, you know. Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, volunteer for what?
To sort of be the point person to spearhead a, a review of a policy or to bring back a list of modifications. That person could work with superintendent, that person could work independently or with other board members as long as it wasn't a quorum and bring back a, a sort of draft, if you will.
And I, I thought Lori had already volunteered for that role.
Used, I thought that's what I was.
Yeah.
Collecting the list and helping to spearhead that. I didn't know you wanted to be responsible for drafting all of the updates. And if you'd like to, that's, that's fine. That's my misunderstanding if that was the case.
Oh, you thought I was the one to gather, but then I need to take it to somebody who can. Or.
Hey Jonathan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so how, how would it, how would we decide? Would we first like bring up a policy or two and say, do we all agree that we should change this policy? Or do we, you know, what if five of us or four of us or six of us say it's fine? It doesn't need to be changed. Should we first, should, should we first decide it needs to be changed? And if we agree it needs to be changed and updated, then have a discussion about the updates? And then maybe Lori can take them out and distill those down into something that, that we can talk about later? Would that be, would that be how the process would work?
I think it's. But I'm.
We need to first all agree that a policy needs to be changed before we go start tinkering with it.
My understanding was that we were either supposed to share them with Jonathan or I, and I was supposed to put together a list and then bring it to a work session and say, how do you feel about these policies? And we do the checklist, strike it, say yes, and then we knew what to carry on to the next level through the.
Perfect.
If that, so I think that's what we need to set up is say, this is our due date. If you have any policies that you want to add to the list, submit them to myself. And then we will bring them forward to the board and decide if the majority says A or N. At least that's my understanding, Jonathan.
Yeah, no, that matched mine as well.
Oh, good.
I, I was only particularly maybe poking at this policy that Shelley brought up just because the timeliness of it is all.
Oh, I think we should, my personal feeling is we should tackle that immediately. That's on the front burner. So would you like me to take that and take that policy and, and reach out to OSBA? Or how do we want to do this?
Well, I think probably in, I mean, there's a lot of ways we can go about it, right? Boards can operate in a lot of different ways. My personal opinion is this sort of got brought up tonight. We're talking about it. Probably what we ought to do is, I mean, we do have several months before we actually vote on new members. What we ought to probably do. What we ought to probably do is bring it back to another meeting and go through then that process. But make sure this one comes up at least at the, at the next opportunity. At least have that next level of conversation, give people an opportunity to go back and review it and determine if they think changes or even any further discussion is warranted or not. And if, I guess if a majority thinks so, then we proceed. And if a majority doesn't, then I guess we know where we stand. So that would be my own opinion, but I don't, you know.
Well, should we, we do this at the next work session with this policy? I guess that's what I'm trying to ascertain.
We could, we could talk about doing that if the next work session, yes, Jennifer.
I just want to move that we do talk about that at the next work session. It, it seems to me like the consensus is that that policy really does need to be considered for revision. And, and Tom, I do get your point. I'm not sure we need to totally, we need to vote on that right now because the real vote would come when the policy, like, we're going to read it and we're going to adopt it. I think that's where the vote comes in, but I just want to suggest that we stick to this agenda and move that to the, the next available work session.
Yeah, Jennifer, I agree, we should, and Lori, thanks for the explanation. We just, we need to consider it before we send somebody off to, to modify it, you know? Consider it as a group and see if there's a consent.
Oh, of course, of course. Yeah.
To look at it, so perfect. Yeah, I, I think we should, yeah, yeah. So I, I just, just a clarification. So yeah, I mean, I think it's timely when we should consider it.
So Jennifer, did you move that we discuss this at the next work session?
Um, I don't know that we have to do a motion, but just to, to move along with this agenda. Jonathan, is that okay that you put that in there? Can we get a thumbs up, thumbs down, not an official vote, kind of head nod on that?
Right, I, I'm hearing a lot of sort of silent and/or verbal agreement that we can bring this up at the next one. But if, if anybody disagrees with that, I guess speak up. Otherwise, I'm going to assume bringing this up at the next meeting is a, is a topic, which may or may not be the work session, but, but soon as a topic makes sense. The work session, by the way, is a, is a training session for this coming one, so it's, might be a little awkward to do it then.
I was just wondering if it, if, if there would be objection to at least running it by OSBA in the meantime. I mean, I feel like we're, you know, taking a long time to talk about, talking about it when we could just submit it to OSBA. And if there's been any legal or statutory change that we know we have to put in there, that sort of accelerates our process a bit. I don't know if there's objection to at least having them take a look at it in the meantime.
I mean, that work could happen at any time by, by anyone, I think.
Okay.
So Lori wants to do that, right?
At this juncture, long as we do it, I'm happy. I don't have to be the owner. Okay? So let's get it moving. How about that? Get this moving and send it off to OSBA and see what they say and then bring it back.
I think, I think we're all agreeing.
All right.
Yeah, so there is a policy that we follow in a process. And that policy is that we don't know, whatever, you know, say Tom brings up a, a policy that he says, you know, I've got a question on this and I think we should, you know, look at the update. Well, there's legislation that passes that we, that, that changes our policies legally. And that's where OSBA comes in. We don't know that unless you're following legislature and all the policy change and all the state law changes. OSBA knows that. So what we do is the, is the process is we send that policy and we talk to OSBA. They talked, they say, okay, here's the updates. And they keep track of it, of the legislature and the new, the new stat, the new laws. And then we come back and we look at that. And then there's people, there's, you know, a committee that looks at it as well, who works along with OSBA. And that would be Lori. And they reword it and then it comes to us and it has to go through a reading three times. We have three readings through it. So I'm, I'm looking up our policy online right now and I, I can't seem to find our policies online. But I think it would be important to follow the process and make sure that we're reading our policy process to do this right and not just making it up along.
Agreed. So I think Lori is going to take the first step and we will, if we have a draft, we will then read it accordingly and have discussion about it at the next available meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And Lori, I'm happy to be your sous chef on this. If you need backup and you don't want to be a committee of one, I'm happy to be available to, as a sounding board or whatever.
Join me, be, be the sous chef.
Thanks, Jen. Okay. Speaking of that next upcoming work session, the second discussion item is that we do have two training opportunities coming up. The, this, some of these are going to be a result of the OSBA sort of promised training that comes with the superintendent search process that we've paid for, right? So we have been approved for, I believe, up to 12 hours of training through OSBA, some of which is, is required training through this process through OSBA and some of it is, is board-directed training. And so that the meeting on July 27th, that's our regular work session for July, will be the first of these. Working with OSBA, at least a few of these topics are going to be sent to, well, they're going to be sort of mandated by the OSBA requirements for, for this. I think post this first meeting, they'll primarily be board-directed topics. And I, I sent you guys an email on that, I, I think you're aware. But I just wanted to mention that that's coming up and, you know, for the public to know that we are embarking on this now that we have Mr. Drew on board, we're able to start that process. And then on a related topic, Scott has put together a, an administrative retreat where they're going to be kind of connecting together and working together and, and coming up with a cohesive plan for working together. And, and part of that's going to be the board interacting and working and getting training as well. And that's going to be on, our, our part of it's going to be on August 11th. And I'm looking forward to that as well. I don't know, Scott, if you had anything you wanted to add regarding that part of this? I can't hear you, Scott. I don't see that you're muted, but I couldn't hear you. Could anybody else hear him?
No.
Oh, no.
There we go.
No? Okay. So for the August 11th, the training on group dynamics, I think you'll all really enjoy that. We're bringing in a third party to help run that and they're, they're very well-known in the education landscape and considered by many to be the gold standard in, in terms of how schools and school systems operate. And I think that you'll, you'll like that. And really what it boils down to is communicating and how we communicate with each other. So I think we're looking forward to it and the administrators will join us in that work as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other discussion items for tonight?
I had a question for Scott. Thank you, Scott, for explaining that. Will the, will you be preparing any other, you know, opportunities for training? Or just the August 11th one so far?
Yeah, so that'll be the first step, Shelley. Excellent question. And, and, you know, and the way we like to do things is, is sort of the praxis model where we get some training. We then go have an opportunity to try it out and then we come back and get a little bit of coaching and then we come back and get a little bit more training. So, and we'll explain those next steps at that training.
Ah, got it, okay. I just wanted to mention to you that I think it would be fruitful for us as a board to potentially request that the Oregon Ethics Commission come out and do some training. Diana Gould is an excellent trainer and we haven't had her out in our district before. So I just wanted to share that with you. I think it would be a good step in the right direction with this new, with this new year with you. And I would look forward to hearing some training or to have, being in some training sessions with her. So, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Shelley. Okay. There's no other discussion items. We're going to move into administrator and staff report, starting with our new superintendent, Scott Drew.
Well, thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, board. And to everybody I've had the opportunity to meet already. I've just been blown away with how warm the welcome has been and with everybody's grace and patience as we continue to work through a really unprecedented time. And this is day eight for me. Luckily, I had spent just a ton of time during the transition to meet with individual employees. And I think the final count was 135 individual interviews I was able to have with all the, the district administrators. And of course, the majority of my time was spent with teachers, but they make up the largest percentage of our workforce as well. And I just, I think the thing that I wanted to say first off is just huge, huge shout out to all of you. You guys have been through a lot. And with this past year in the spring and, and you guys have just taken it on like true champions. And, and so my hat's off to you, I can't wait to work with you. You guys are the ones that inspire me. So I just wanted to lead with that first and foremost. Michelle, thank you for your comments. I think it's very, very important we keep open lines of communication so that they're productive and that we know where each other stands on various issues. And I think those of you who have worked with me a short period of time and those of you who will work with me will hear me say many, many times the phrase, no surprises. And we truly believe in that motto. It's a motto that has served me very well in my career. And we want to get to a point where we have a whole new level of professionalism by which we operate and, and it all starts with communicating with each other. And so that's really what I wanted to lead off with. And the second thing I wanted to say also is how impressed I've been with the, the emails that I've received, the phone calls that I've received, the thoughtful feedback on the direction that we're attempting to go with reopening schools. That's taking up the majority of our time. Our team is working round the clock, seven days a week on this plan. And the feedback that I continue to get, especially even up until a few hours before this meeting tonight, is extremely thoughtful, very compelling points. And I want all of you to know that as a superintendent, everything that happens in this district, right or wrong, is my fault. And I am personally responsible for everybody's wellbeing, our students and every single staff member. And I just want you to know how serious I take that. We will never close the door on feedback from our community and we will always listen. And of course, we had to pick up right where things were on July 1st and we're moving forward with that. And I hope that you've noticed the communication that we've been sending out. Our goal is to keep you all informed. And, and we will keep that goal and that promise to you. Right now, what makes this work so complicated is that we're working under the guidance of an executive order from the governor with guidance from Oregon Department of Education. And we're trying to take the resources that we have and build a plan, which is more complicated than building an airplane while it's flying. I can assure you of that. And so, so I just also wanted to say thank you for your grace and patience as we work through that. We'll continue to explore avenues where we can continue to, to take in feedback from our community. And with that, Jonathan, I think I'll go ahead and turn it back to you. If I haven't already responded to your emails, if you're a community member out there, I apologize. It's been an extremely difficult time right now, but I will do so. And I just want to say thank you again. It's been just a pleasure to get to know a lot of you and I look forward to meeting many of you in the future.
Thank you, Scott, appreciate it. Right, Steve, I think you're up.
Um, I, I just want to say something to Scott Drew. I just want to welcome you to Silverfall School District. This is your very first regular board meeting. And I'm sorry we're on Zoom. I wish we could meet in person, but I, I would like to welcome you. You are, you are doing a great job so far in an extraordinary time. And, you know, we're all trying to figure this out. So thank you for your, your statement. I appreciate that, it's welcomed.
Thank you, Shelley.
Okay, thanks. Steve, I think you're up.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody hear me okay? Okay, great, thanks. So I do have a few updates as far as finances, but in July, we don't traditionally have a financial report. We're just getting started closing the fiscal year end. And, and then we come back in August with a July financial statement and potentially a preliminary June year-end unaudited statement, either in August or September. Our auditors come in in October, but we're hoping to have some information for fiscal year 1920 in, in August. What I can say is since our last meeting on June 22nd, you know, we have learned more definitively from the state that the legislators, legislators will not be coming back most likely until August to discuss the remaining budget gap. They're still trying to get through some of the federal aid and, and how everything works together. I haven't heard this specifically, but it wouldn't surprise me if they actually waited till the next state quarterly economic forecast, which would come out in mid to late August as well, just to see where that sits because that's another piece of the puzzle. But we're expecting August. And since our last meeting, we, the, I think I had said that the CARES grant for, specifically for the ESER funds, the school district part of the CARES Act money had been published by ODE and was due on July 10. So we got that submitted on the second. And they're hoping to have all the plans reviewed and approved by, actually by this Wednesday is what, what their goal was. So we're hoping to hear this week as to what, where our approval status is. Again, that amount is $362,000. And we, we had about $20,000 that will be passed through the two charter schools. And then we kind of focused our, our part on PPE, personal protective equipment that might exceed what FEMA might be able to do for us, as well as expenses we've already incurred and may additionally incur related to technology. You know, whether it had been for distance learning or training teachers to teach. We'd already incurred some of those expenses and maybe incurring more as well. So we, we kind of centered on those primary two items, but it doesn't limit it, limit us either because ODE knows that plans may need to change. So, so we have it submitted, we're waiting on word back from them. Also, I just, I know it was just talked about in budget committee vacancies and committees and so forth. But I, I think that we, we had talked about the, the potential of bringing the, the budget committee back once we have new information. And I think if we wanted to do that, that the timing around that would, in my mind, be after the legislature meets to make a final call on where the budget's going to land. And we have, you know, more information on that. So again, that could be in August. But I think moving forward, I do think that the solution that would, would, would work best would be to get a, a finance work group, district work group together that would have one or two board liaisons, as well as potentially two or three budget committee members that would be interested in that work that would meet either bimonthly, quarterly, or just when, you know, big issues come up. That worked well in a previous district that I was at. Really, it's not dissimilar to, really, we, we already have that with, and work group is a key word here because bringing back a full budget committee or long-range facility committee is really a board committee with published meetings, whereas a work group is a little bit more informal and reports back to the board. Again, not dissimilar to the process we went through for the K5 work group that reported back to the board for the Mark Twain, Robert Frost study that was done back in 2019. And also, it's very similar to what we already do with, with, with the board with regards to having one or two designated representatives or liaisons to, for bargaining. Jennifer and Jonathan were liaisons for the board in the certified bargaining. And now Janet and Tom are liaisons in our classified bargaining. So that, that's, that's really what this finance work group could look like. So we're committed to talking more about its development. between meetings here with Jonathan and Jennifer. And also, one thing I also wanted to mention before I get to our insurance topic was that even though the legislature needs to come back and decide on that final budget gap, they did, where ODE was directed to move forward to fund Oregon public schools based on the $9.0 billion funding level. So we will be receiving our first 2020, 2021 state school fund payment for this year based on the $9.0 billion funding level. In July, we receive actually a double payment, two payments in July and a single payment every month through the month of May. So that, that is where we're at with that at this point. Tonight, I asked James Dooley, our insurance agent, I think he's been with the district, helping the district for about seven years now, from Larson Flynn, to come and speak to us and expand upon some of the details that I provided at our June meeting with regards to the PACE premium increase, some premium history, both with our property and liability coverage, as well as our safe workers' compensation coverage. And also to discuss in more detail the policy language with regard to COVID and liability there. So before I turn it over to James, I appreciate James being here tonight. Are there any questions with regard?
I think we lost Steve.
Sorry, my internet's a little unstable. I apologize. I just wanted to know if there were any questions with regards to, to my updates before we brought James in to discuss his items. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask James to come in. Drew, if you wouldn't mind making James a presenter. James did put some information together at the very link for the board and for the public to be able to see just that had, has some, it's going to be the information that he goes over verbally tonight, but just with some premium rate history and, and that type of thing. So we'll get that up tomorrow. But without, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to James.
Can you guys see me?
You'll have to turn on your camera, James, but we can hear you.
It should be on. Let me see. Share screen?
There you go.
Can you see me now?
Not yet.
Weird. I'm not sure why that's not. How about now?
We can see you now, James.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, good evening, Chairman Evans of the Silverfall School Board and Superintendent Drew. Look forward to meeting a few of you that I haven't met. Like Steve said, unfortunately, the packet that I prepared for you with the numbers did not come through. So there's nothing worth funding. Talk to me about the numbers when you don't have them in front of you. Part of the reason Steve asked me to come in is this year we took a little bit of a bump. So I kind of prepared, you know, a summary of the premium for the last five years. And starting in July of 2016 and 17 policy period, the premium was $230,000. The following year was only 1.6% increase. The following year for that, 2018, 19 year was flat. 2019, 20 was 3%. And then this year, we really got it. It was a combination of a couple of things. The self-insured trust, Special District Association of Oregon pays, had to go out for reinsurance. And it was a little difficult market with some of the losses out there, both from excessive litigations through, not just for the schools, but across the districts and across the industry. And so that generated a significant increase. That coupled with, we recently had some fair, fair amount of appraisals done. So I was going to share that and hear what buildings went up from all the seismic upgrades. So if you were to keep, the total insurable values just last year were 133,000. And it went up to 151 because of the seismic upgrades and an appraisal, even though Steve and I spent quite a bit of time over the last three or four years trying to stay on top of what we thought the replacement cost values were. So if you took out the TIV change, the rate increase is actually only about 12%. But everything combined together, it was a 22.79% increase this year. And I did share by year, not only the rate, but the premium comparisons that again, Mr. and Debbie could get that out to us in a timely manner. So that's, I apologize for that. The other thing that I think I shared with you is the, the actual appraisal reports, where you can kind of see which buildings, which locations, the values went up. The good news on the workers' comp, that actually went down. Working with Steve over the last three years, and we really bird dogged these claims, try to make sure we can get the reserves down where appropriate. And this impacts what they call the experience modification factor, which basically kind of compares you to other school districts. And we were running a little hot, 1.07. So we're charged another 7% compared to the average district. Now we're down to 1.01 and we're trending even better with a couple of good years of claims coming on. So that's going to help in terms of creating some savings. And my overall theme working with the school district is, you know, safety equals jobs. And so the last thing that I was going to talk about is the specific new exclusion with regard to COVID. Obviously, there's a lot going on in the industry. The district or the special districts case spent an inordinate amount of time trying to find reinsurers that would take on that risk. It's just not happening across the industry. And so it's currently being excluded in the specific language that I've included in here. That essentially says, any liability for damages, including any expense, cost, loss, legal fees, liability or legal obligations that in any way, in whole or in part arise out of or relates to the results from any alleged or actual transmission of communicable disease. So that's unfortunate and I'm not sure where that's going to go for the whole industry. It's very uncharted waters in terms of where some liabilities or some defense will come out with some opportunist litigants. So we'll just have to all keep an eye on that and work really well. I am working with special districts to kind of get an all things COVID update from a risk management and insurance perspective. Work comp related claims, you know, that's all driven by statute. So I think those will be covered. Someone talked about earlier about sick time and all that. I don't know. I don't know what your policies are going to be going forward on that. And we're just all going to have to see. And in closing, I also wanted to just say that we really look forward to getting to working with you, Superintendent Drew and your staff. And I am available for any questions or follow-up once you guys get these documents. And I apologize if you don't have me here right now. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, James.
I know there might be a few questions for James. I just wanted to say again, thank you for coming, James. I think just as one point of clarification, I think James had said the total insured values went from, or TIV went from 131,000 to 151 something. It's actually 131 million to 157 million. But, but anyway, James also provides training when we ask him to, safety committee training and things like that. And is very proactive in helping, helping our district, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, the one question that came to my mind with that COVID exclusion is, you know, obviously there's a lot of unknowns there. What does that mean to you, Steve? I mean, if we're, you know, does that basically mean if we get, if somebody filed litigation because they believe their child was wrongfully exposed to COVID? I don't know, right? I'm making up a scenario. I mean, is that what we're talking about? That's the kind of exclusion we're talking about?
Yeah, I think James could, I mean, he would know better than me as an insurance professional. But yeah, that's the way I take it and it makes me very nervous.
Right.
Well, you know that document that shared last board meeting?
It's about the, the letter that was sent to the legislator, legislature?
This one. So following up, you know, I discussed it with a few people at the special districts base. And there may be some limited immunity for school districts, possibly down the road on this subject. You know, at the Trump rally, they had, they signed waivers before they went. So I don't know if I'll serve a hold harmless agreements or those sort of arrangements will work. Again, we're trying to figure it all out. It's all, frightening.
James, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for coming. I had a lot of questions before the meeting about our policies, our insurance policies with COVID and such. And so you've cleared up a lot of that information for me. I look forward to getting those documents from you. And yeah, this, I mean, I think I've had community members come up to me and ask me if we had, if they have to sign a waiver to send their student back to school or, or what's, what's happening. And I said, you know, I don't have an answer. So I think this communication from you and Steve is really helpful for not only the board, but our community as well. So come back again.
We're also possibly had some initial discussions with perhaps getting not just our school district, but three or four around the area to maybe sit down to have a little broader perspective of what's going on for all things COVID. And I think that the more we share, the better I feel it can be because it's, it's different for everybody in every place. You know, my wife's a teacher too, so I'm in it too.
Thank you. Any other questions for Steve or for James? Right. Let's see, with that, we are ready to move on to board reports. Do the board members have anything to bring up or share tonight?
I just had a quick comment. Just wanted to applaud the ongoing efforts on the part of the, the district bargaining team. Heavily engaged in classified bargaining. It's been incredibly time consuming for everybody. Lots of very long hours. And I just think they're doing a fantastic job. And I think we're making good progress. I have established, I think, a really good working relationship with, with the team on the classified bargain, on the classified side. And so I'm really optimistic and I just wanted to applaud those efforts. And, you know, we're sort of in the, I feel like we're in like the 23rd mile of the 26th, you know, the marathon. And we're almost there, but we're, I think everyone's pretty tired.
Thank you, Janet, and to the rest of the team. I'm familiar with that process from not very long ago. And it's, yeah, it's, it's like you described. Yes, Jennifer.
I just wanted to report that Paul asked me to be on the reopening advisory group before he left. And I started that work, which can, has consisted of reading documents that explain the decision-making process behind the ABAV model. And then right now, the group has been given access to a Google Doc that has some of the plan that needs to be turned into ODE on, you know, listed. And we've been commenting in the comments area of, of Google Docs, of that Google Doc. And then we're having a virtual meeting, I think, soon, in July, July 23rd, maybe. And so we will learn more then and I will report back. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we're going to move into our second public comment period. Same basic premise and rules as before. We are limiting it to action items, of which there are two tonight. Drew, did we have anybody already queued up for this? Were you aware?
Nobody queued up, but people are welcome to use a Q and A to put their name in and open the gates.
Okay, so we'll just give it a few, you know, 15, 20 seconds, see if anybody shows some interest and.
I'm not hearing any.
Yeah, last call here, otherwise we're going to move on to our action items. Okay. Well, with that, we're going to move into our, our action items. And the first step is to approve the contract of employment for Assistant Superintendent Dan Bush. The contract is on board book. The board's had a chance to review it. I want to personally thank Dan for the last year. I've worked with him on a number of things and he's been great to work with.
I move to approve the contract of employment for Assistant Superintendent Dan Bush.
So moved.
I second it.
And seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, it's been moved and seconded. We'll move to a, a vote, please, Dan. Actually, you're I guess you're
That's quite, that's quite all right. I, I can navigate this just fine. All right, so assuming Jennifer is ready, here we go. Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Lori?
Hi.
Shelley?
I'm coming. Hi.
Irv?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, Dan. It has been a really great working with the team last year.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you very much. And I enjoy working with each and every one of you, board members and community as well. Thank you.
Okay, the last action item regards the recent lawsuit that Chuck was discussing during his public comment period. Suit claimed that the district withheld a document from public records on improper grounds for, in May of 2019 in particular. The district has agreed to settle the lawsuit. This was, you know, and we're going to release the document in question, so that's out there. The, in short, what we're doing here is we're agreeing that we should no longer treat documents as exempt solely because they were presented in an executive session, but rather on the merits of, of the document itself, right? So if the document is or is not exempt, we will treat it as such, but it won't really have anything to do with whether it was presented during an executive session or not. You know, both the settlement agreement and the resolution that we're about to vote on, our onboard book, you know, if anybody has any, any further questions. The board's role in this matter is to ratify the agreement that was reached by the plaintiff or insurer in the district. And again, that's what we're, we're about to do here. So I just want to make sure that's all clear. I know there was some confusion out there, trying to sort of demuddy the waters here a little bit. With that, I will open the floor up to a motion to approve the resolution, which ratifies the consent judgment in Marion County case number 20CV09281.
I move to ratify the consent judgment in Marion County case number 20CV09281.
So moved.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
So there, so I'm wondering if, if, I'm still trying to get some clarification on this because there still seems to be confusion as to whether we were supposed to have approved this previously, whether we did, whether we didn't, whose responsibility it was to approve it. My understanding is that this, my current understanding is that there was no approval needed, that it was PACE's decision. So I just want to be sure that in ratifying it tonight, we are addressing that issue because we're doing this in public. And it's sort of that next step, as I understand it. And that that, this then will put to rest, once and for all, that confusion. And that that, this then will put to rest once and for all that confusion. And I wonder if, if anybody has some clarity to offer, I would welcome it. I just, I don't want this to keep coming back. I want to make sure we do it properly. And if we didn't do it properly previously, that we can, you know, address that and, and not have there be sort of an ongoing belief that somewhere along the line, we muddied the waters and didn't do things correctly. So I don't know if anyone can speak to that and appreciate that.
I've, I, I can try. I've had two conversations with Pace about this in the last week or so. And, and I guess a couple, you know, in the conversation I had with Pace today, it was, and, and I had sent you a portion of the, the pace policy is that, that, that the claim goes to Pace and Pace in taking on that claim makes its decision on that. And so that was, that came from Pace today in a conversation I had and, and in a previous conversation last week, you know, Pace said that, you know, that, that, that the document has, the agreement has been settled. You know, the board is not in a position to retroactively, you know, change its, you know, you know, has to ratify at least the settlement portion. There's a resolution piece to this that the board, that's important to note, that's part of what Jonathan read earlier related to actions that the district under the direction of the board are, are not going to take in the future. So I think that's an important board statement today is part of this ratification is, is the statement related to, and I don't have the judgment in front of me, but related to, like Jonathan said, withholding documents solely on the basis of them being entered in executive session. So I don't know if that helps. I, I can just tell you that I've been in contact with Pace on a couple of occasions about this. And they've, they've stipulated that piece that, that, that the decision is Pace's decision to, to enter into this agreement. And again, similarly to what I've said before, there is a, there is, you know, kind of a process by which decision makers are, are moving through this. And, you know, I feel like this, this action tonight is, is a decision maker in, in that we are acknowledging that settlement and making a resolution thereof.
You reminded me that I meant, got kind of sidetracked with the actual agenda item, but I meant to read that resolution. So I will do that now for posterity. So this is titled ratification of consent judgment in Marion County case number 20CV09281. dated, you know, today, the Silver Falls School Board hereby adopts and ratifies the consent judgment entered in Marion County case number 20CV09281 and agrees not to treat records as exempt from disclosure under the Public Records Act solely because they were used in executive session or in an evaluation of a superintendent. That's, that's the resolution that we're voting verbatim. Again, I meant to read that earlier.
Well, is this, isn't it already, I mean, there's already been a judgment. So if we don't support this, I mean, I, I guess I feel like the settlement's already in place. The judge has signed. I'm why are we supporting this ratification? I mean, what's the impact if we do or don't?
Well, I think the, the one, and I, again, I don't have the, I could pull it up, but the, that resolution piece is important for the board to make that statement because I believe that was in the settlement that the, that, that statement around what the, the board won't do is, is an important piece for you is, is essentially an action that you need to take and related to as a resolution that we will not do this. So I think that is an important stipulation there.
Well, about the board, but, but these actions were done by former employees. I mean, we're, we're kind of in an interesting situation, if I recall right. And this is where I got a little mixed up is when I'm a little concerned about the executive session on May 18th. Because I was under the impression that there was a consensus taken. And I'm, I'm wondering why we need to do this if everything else is in place.
Yes, Jennifer.
I, I think we're holding ourselves accountable.
Not all the way.
I agree.
This, this one ratification statement is not holding ourselves accountable or a lot of things accountable.
Well, I guess my point is how would the public know the outcome if we did not do this?
Because we should have done it after executive session. We should have taken a vote then.
But the decision
violation of executive session.
The decision hadn't been made at that point, though.
There was a consensus in executive session. And we should have come out of executive session and taken a public vote. Not this.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I, 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 I have a, there's, I have a lot of questions about this. Um, there were some significant last, you know, emails that came in right before the board meeting that I would like to have answered. And I, I feel like this is not sorted out yet. I don't feel like it's sorted out yet. I have multiple questions because of a lot of things that happened in executive session that we can't talk about here. So that doesn't make sense to do this ratification. I don't feel comfortable at this point. After all the questions came in. So I, I, I think, I think there needs to be more discussion and clarity about the process that happened and make sure that we have not, make sure that if we have violated something or we didn't, that we know everything, that we, that we know the exact process and how it worked. I, yeah.
Jonathan, I'm sorry to interrupt. James had something, I think, to, to come from an insurance piece, I think.
Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's interesting. You know, Chuck is a client and a friend and we've been kind of going back and forth with this. And in addition to the document that I think you might have referenced, Dan, there's also a part of the 2018 intergovernmental arranged agreement, which was a jointer to the trust agreement when it comes to these type of issues. I mean, it's one thing if you guys want to go ahead and ratify it, but in terms of did Pace settle it or did, you know, do you guys agree to settle it? Through this power of the board trustee agreement, it says in furthest of the purpose set forth in this trust, the trustee shall have such powers as may be necessary, prudent to discharge his responsibilities in managing and controlling the trust, including but not limited to the following powers. To provide programs whereby participants may obtain or participate in coverage afforded by policies of insurance or participated in pool self-insurance program to accept, determine and make reasonable arrangements for payment by or on behalf of each participant of all contributions and premiums due to manage the assets of the trust and adjust and pay authorized losses on behalf of the participants. And B, to engage and oversee administrative services and other staff to engage in the services of competent professionals to provide services to the trust and to purchase reinsurance or excess insurance as necessary to protect the interests of the participants. Provide risk management, insurance-related services to the trust and its participants, including such claims reporting and adjusting audibility and record keeping, information sharing, underwriting claims, administration services, legal defense and settlement of claims. Communications and marketing, loss control prevention, procedures, consulting, risk reduction, related administrative consulting services as the trustees deem appropriate. The trustees may pay for such services out of trust funds. So again, it's, once you transfer the risk, oftentimes, or most of the times, it's, it's really in the hands of, of, of the trust to, to settle. Again, that's different than you guys wanting to have something separate to, to affirm that. I don't know if that helps make any sense. I can share that with you guys too.
Yeah.
My understanding, thank you.
I, I think if I'm understanding is that the, the ratification that we're doing tonight is somewhat separate from the process concerns and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shelley, that you're speaking to. So the ratification of this is just, it was one, one item of many in the settlement that we agreed to. And so we'll just do that as, as Jennifer said, as a show of good faith and our intention to, to change our practices moving forward, given our new understanding of the law. But there are still, as you said, underlying confusion as to how that process worked out. And I think, at least for me, you know, I can, I can go ahead and vote to ratify this, this judgment. But I think we still have some conversation to have around that process and making sure that we all have a common understanding, which I'm not sure that we do, on whether we did that exactly right. Because we're, it's going to come up again in some form. And I think we're all just so tired of stumbling when we think we're doing the right thing, only to find out later that we did the wrong thing. So it would be nice to be able to have additional conversation around this in the future, moving forward. And maybe, maybe there are more questions we can ask that can get us some clearer information. I appreciated your contribution there, James. I think that was, that was helpful.
I agree with you. I, you know, I am just very cautious now about, you know, process. And we've been, you know, and being led down the wrong or given the wrong advice. That has come back to haunt us later. And I do not, you know, I don't want to start out this year with any type of confusion of any kind. I want it clear. I want it crystal clear. And I do not feel comfortable because of so many questions that I have. I, I would like those questions answered first. And then, you know, maybe come back next month when we all have a completely clear understanding of all of it. Because one thing led to another. This is kind of a domino effect. And I don't want to put the cart before the horse. So I would rather have all the information correct and then come back and say, okay, this is how it worked. And there's no potential, you know, violations of any kind. Whether it's policy or ethics, I'm not going down that road. I want it clear. So, um, you know, I, I thank you for that, but I, I would rather table this until August till we can clear up a lot of information and make sure that all of us understand from the minute we started to the minute to this ratification. That's how I feel.
What would be your measuring stick for determining that you had all the information that you needed?
Well, I don't know at this point because I have so much conflicting information that I think it needs to, you know, there's a lot of people that need to sit down and figure out what's going on. You know, I, I got information from Dan and from Pace that he shared with us, which I read. But then I have other, you know, then Chuck sends in several emails that come, that conflicts a lot of it. And then, you know, Mr. Kazer, you know, also spoke on this and I just don't see a clear, I, I don't even know. I, I need these questions answered. That's what I need. All of these questions and make sure that the process was done right. I just, I don't feel comfortable. I don't want it to come back and haunt us later with somebody filing an ethics complaint or you know, a formal complaint against us, myself included. And, and I, it's just, I, I can't, I can't at this time. I, I would like to table it till August. So we can clear it up.
I, I think where I'm at though, is I do trust the people that are giving us the advice that we follow the process here. So.
Well, I do, you know what? You don't, you know what? I think, I, you know, Jonathan, I, I'm glad that you said that and I'm glad that you trust them and so do I. I trust them too, Jonathan. And you know what? I want, I have made a commitment to be crystal clear, to have very good communication this year and to make sure that there are no sticky points. I made that clear to multiple people and our administrators and they know how much I appreciate them. So I would like to have more clarity and more understanding before I pass this for me. To keep me safe. Sorry. I don't need anybody coming after me with policy violations and formal complaints.
Any other discussion on this?
Well, I personally think that there does need to be more discussion. I'm not comfortable with this at all. I don't feel comfortable about what happened in the executive session, May 18th. I think it did make things very murky. And quite frankly, what, all we're doing is continuing the same path where these things aren't clear with the board and then we're asked to do a ratification. I'm not comfortable with this at all. I still have questions. Not all of my questions were answered. I sent that in a letter. I do stand by what happened in executive session and I, I mean, if everything is already in place, why do we need to support this then? If we, if, if we go on the theory that we were simply being informed in executive session, which isn't what my feeling was at all. Then why are we here now? We're talking about not doing these things again, but look at all, you literally have to be a legal acrobat to get some of these, you know, documents. That's ridiculous. I'm not feeling good about it. I, I think we have a long way to go and it's because we don't have the proper training and we're not getting the answers upfront. And I'm not happy about this at all and I'm not comfortable.
Yes, Jennifer.
I guess I just want to say before we proceed to vote that I agree with Janet. I think that there are some, maybe, maybe more than one issue, but the issue that we're voting on now, my understanding is, is that we're saying that the board is committing to a new, committing the district to a practice that we release or, or we do not deny a release of a public records request just simply because it was in executive session. Like that is what we're voting on right now. I am very comfortable saying, committing the district to that practice that we will not release public records or we will not deny the release of public records simply because the records were presented in executive session.
But you know, Jennifer, there's more to it than this. And, and I just don't feel comfortable about reducing it just to that in its simplistic form. I mean, we're talking about aesthetic statements that were directed to one board member. And they were, and they were just fear mongering. There is more to this and we haven't fully discussed it and laid it on the table and just got it out in the open. I can't believe.
So I, I mean, I'm, I'm largely in agreement with what Jennifer said. This, this resolution, I am in complete agreement. We should not be excluding documents because they were shared in executive session. That's what the resolution states. We could debate, it sounds like till the end of time on whether the board did or didn't have to approve the, the settlement agreement. My understanding is the board did not have to approve the settlement agreement. But that's, I guess, I'm not sure anybody's going to be satisfied that they have the right answer. And I doubt this is going to go to the Supreme Court. So at some point, there's just going to be disagreement on this, I think. Having said all of that, I'm still very comfortable with the resolution as, as written. I think little reason to believe that that resolution is, is inappropriate from the standpoint that I think we all agree, we shouldn't be doing something if it's wrong. And it sounded like that's what we were agreeing to out of all this and that was part of the settlement. So that's, that's where I stand. I don't know. Any last thoughts, Dan, before I guess I proceed?
Well, I'd like to say that I do agree with the statement, but I don't Well, I'd like to say that I do agree with the statement, but I don't agree that it's the only statement that we have that we're going to make. I agree that we can't deny documents to the public because they were simply in executive session, presented in executive. Of course, I agree with that. But I think there's more to it. I think there is. And for you to assume that questions aren't going to be answered until we, and we can debate this all, you know, till we're blue in the face, or it won't go to the Supreme Court, I don't appreciate that. I do have questions, and I would like to have more discussion to make sure that I'm clear about the process and how we got to this resolution. So I absolutely agree with the statement, but it's not, I just want to make sure that it's not the only statement that we are going to be making. We might have to make more statements, and that I don't know. So that is why I don't want to particularly vote on this particular resolution. I want to make sure that we're covering all the bases. And I would like to have a little more time and discuss that with the proper people, and I would like to bring this back at our next board meeting in August. And I truly believe that by then, there will be some clear process answers. I really believe that, because we have professionals working on this. So I just need a little bit more information, so it's just a little clearer to me. That's all.
And why are we now doing this? Why can't we provide a statement about how we really feel, and how we would never, ever put anyone through that again as a district towards individuals or other, along with this statement that might, I still don't understand why we're doing it? Instead of dribs and drabs, why don't we do it as a whole? We want to work together as a board? We want to completely understand this?
Jonathan?
Lay it down to the table and do that, and I'm not comfortable. I'm still not comfortable.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jonathan, can we move ahead, please? We've heard from just about everybody. I think we need to make some forward motion.
That's fair. At this point, I would accept a motion to either table or to adopt the resolution per the action item.
The resolution, the resolution has already been moved. It's already been moved to...
You're right. I forgot. Yes, you're right. Thank you.
So we have to deal with that before we deal with any other motions.
You're right. Resolution has been moved. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Resolution's been moved and seconded. At this point, it's prudent to call for a vote on the resolution as written and onboard book and as read tonight.
Ready, Jonathan?
Yeah.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lori?
Nay.
Shelley?
Nay.
Irv?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Okay, I have it. Motion passes. Well, it's worth, I do hope you get the answers to your questions, Shelley. I really do.
You know, I could, if, you know, you'd asked me to interject, and I was going to say something there, Jonathan, is to kind of a, only word that comes to mind is compromise, but I think that, you know, Shelley, earlier in the meeting, you had suggested Diane Gould making a presentation. So I think, you know, one thing that we could, you know, one or two options we could look into doing is checking in to see if Ms. Gould can get scheduled here in the near future. The other would be, you know, we talked earlier about Miller Nash coming in, and we could, and get some insight on that, too. So those are two things that I will reach out to both parties to see about, you know, what their availability is in the coming, you know, month or so.
Dan, I want to thank you so much for that response. I think that that is an effort to work together to make sure that we're following process and understanding moving forward. So I welcome that, and I really thank you for moving forward on that. So I look forward to it.
So I'm going to reach out to Ms. Gould first, see what her availability is, and then follow up with Miller Nash, depending on what Ms. Gould says.
Okay. Well, thank you. That being the last of our two action items, I guess without objection, meeting is adjourned.